Thank you, and if we could all take a moment of silence here to remember, we don't have any specific condolences for veterans lost from the town this evening, but to remember those in the town who have passed, and also especially for Las Vegas this week, if we could take a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to the agenda, approval of minutes of September 19th, 2017. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Made by Mr. Haley.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion, Mr. Haley?
None.
Mr. Gallagher?
None.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Stain.
Stain from Mr. George. Thank you. Moving on to announcements from the president. There is one announcement from the president tonight. The 2017 Health and Public Safety Expo sponsored by Bridgewater Triad, which is the Bridgewater Office of Elder Affairs, the Bridgewater Police and Fire Departments, and the Plymouth County Sheriff's and District Attorney's Office, the three legs of the triangle, is going to be held on October 17th, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Bridgewater Senior Center, 10 Wally Kruger Way, Bridgewater, Mass., obviously. Transportation is available for seniors who need it. Please contact the senior center for more information at (508) 697-0929. There will be a canine demo, free raffles, resource information, blood and glucose screening, senior IDs. There is no charge for this program, and in fact, you will get a free boxed lunch if you are a senior. So again, if you're interested in this, it's October 17th, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the senior center, and if you need to contact them, it is (508) 697-0929. Thank you. Now, we have two proclamations, and then without objection from the council, I would hope to take hearing, the hearing on the laying out and acceptance of the road at 7:35 out of order at that point in time, and then move back to Citizens Open Forum, so that anyone who's here for the hearing can be heard when they expect it to be. So, the first proclamation is recognizing October 2017 as Bring Your Own Bag Month. Whereas, whereas source reduction is one of the primary solid waste management strategies to minimize the amount of waste that is disposed in the landfill, and whereas the number of plastic bags used may be significantly reduced when individuals bring their own bags when shopping, and whereas Bring Your Own Bag, B-Y-O-Bag, is an effort to educate the public about the benefits of bringing your own bag when shopping, and whereas it is the hope that the efforts of B-Y-O-Bag Month will encourage lifelong changes in habit. Now therefore, the Town Council of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, does hereby proclaim October 2017 as Bring Your Own Bag Month in the town of Bridgewater, and encourages all residents to participate by bringing their own reusable bags when shopping, and be it further proclaimed that the town clerk is hereby authorized to distribute a certified copy of this proclamation to the public health department, signed by the Town Council and the Town Manager. And I'd recognize Ms. Neary, you'd like to come up and accept this on behalf of everybody, and certainly shake everybody's hand here on the council. Thank you for raising awareness.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you. And I want to thank all of you for supporting us last year when we didn't pass the ordinance. It's going quite well. And we gave out a ton of bags and cast weekend at the Autumn Fest to support this occasion. And we have several banks that donated, and I want to thank you, Sean, for giving me bags from Citizens Bank, we have Bridgewater Credit Union, Bridgewater Safe House, Eastern Bank, Harbor One, and Wood Brothers. And we do have a few left over, so we will continue to give them out so that people will get in the habit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, the second proclamation is recognizing The Well for their work in the community. Whereas The Well, a center for hope and learning, was established in 2011 as a nonprofit organization dedicated to the health and well-being of the community at large, and whereas The Well is focused on enhancing the mind, body, and spirit through a holistic therapeutic approach, and whereas The Well has also been focused on the issue of mental health and awareness of various mental health conditions, and whereas The Well is an outstanding nonprofit organization within our community, and whereas The Well will be holding its annual fundraiser, Unmasked, Unmasking the Stigma of Mental Illness, on Friday, October 20th, at Indian Pond Country Club in Kingston, Massachusetts at 7:00 p.m. And now therefore, the Town Council of Bridgewater hereby recognized The Well, a center for hope and learning, for their important work of compassion and care within our community, signed by both the Town Council and the Town Manager. Is there anyone here from The Well to accept this? Seeing none, we will convey this to them, because they're doing an outstanding job of removing the stigma of mental health. I'll have more to say about that in my council comments later tonight. Without objection from the Town Council, I would take item F out of order. Is there any objection?
None.
Seeing none, I'll open the hearing at 7:38. And the petitioners here on laying out the public way and acceptance of the way, Fern Hollow Road and Hillsdale Lane. Mr. Town Manager?
I don't believe, I don't believe the petitioners are here.
Okay.
But if it suits the council, I do know that the petitioner has cleaned up the debris that was at issue, and our highway roadway superintendent has no issue at all with acceptance of these roads. They're actually very well-built by our standards.
Are there general questions from the public? Are there any public speaking in favor of this? No. Are there any public speaking in opposition to this? Seeing none. Questions from the Town Council? Counsel? Mr. Colombo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I remember at the last meeting, there were some neighbors who were concerned about the conditions. None of them are here tonight. Have you received, or has anyone received any comments from the neighbors?
I believe the roadway superintendent had received some communication from them. I don't know if it was a call or in writing, but I do know that we had pictures of the concerns that the neighbors had, and the petitioner took care of the debris that was in one of the lots. They took care of that Friday, I believe.
We've had no, I guess I'm inferring, interpreting the silence of the neighbors with their being satisfied, so I would support passage. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I believe the concerns of the residents were definitely taken care of by the debris that was removed. I actually took a ride by that roadway this morning to get a general look at things, and everything seemed to be in order. The roadway seemed to be in very good condition. Curbing seemed good. So, being the sponsor, I'm also in support of approval of this tonight.
Other questions from the Town Council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:40. And I would entertain a motion to find that the laying out of the public way is required by common convenience and necessity.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Souza. Mr. Perry, any discussion?
Yep. As has already mentioned, I think everything seems to be in order and ready to be approved.
Mr. Souza?
Not discussed.
Any other discussion from the council? Seeing none, this requires a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous?
It requires a roll call vote?
No, a voice vote on the laying out of the way. Now, I'd ask that there be a motion to approve order 2017-011, laying out and accepting private way, Fern Hollow Road and Hillsdale, Hillside Lane. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Souza. Mr. Perry, any further discussion?
Nothing further.
Mr. Souza?
No, discussion's been had.
Any further discussion from the council? This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Holmberg.
There we go.
Yes.
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 Mine in favor.
Okay. You just made the job of our roadways department a little bit harder. That's okay, though. We're happy to have you. Moving back to Citizens Open Forum, and I understand a lot of folks may be here to talk about an issue that we've talked about a few times in the last couple of meetings, so if you could keep your comments to entertaining new ideas and new information to give to the council, that would certainly be appreciated. Thank you. Public comment? Yes, Mrs. Fahey.
Good evening. My name is Marie Fahey, and I reside at 105 Bayberry Circle in Bridgewater. I am a concerned citizen, parent, grandparent, Bridgewater Rainham School Nurse Leader, Bridging Lives Coalition Member, Esperт Coordinator, and Cona Center Board Member. And let it be known that I am vehemently opposed to the opening of any retail recreational marijuana shops here in our town. My reasons are many. I share the same concerns about the medical and health implications that Dr. Kern already discussed at the last Town Council meeting. I'm also concerned that increased availability will only lead to more impaired, actually, members of our community, that our children will witness. Our children are already confused about the mixed messages surrounding the recent marijuana legislation. I know that firsthand, because last year, we initiated the Espert Screening and Brief Intervention and Referal for Treatment Program in our schools. That's a mandate by Governor Baker to respond to the opioid crisis that we're facing. We're providing students the tools to make educated and healthy decisions, and when we bring up the topic of marijuana, they are genuinely concerned. They feel it's legal. What are the, it must not be a big deal. So the school nurses have a big job to do when we interview these students one-on-one. And young people, teens, who start using substances have a much higher addiction rate than older adults. We're hopeful that our prevention efforts won't be sabotaged or lessened by the appearance of pot shops that tout their benefits. I know there are medicinal purposes for marijuana that, in a controlled setting, are beneficial. I do try to keep an open mind about these things, but I really have some genuine concerns that young people need to know that it can be addictive, and with addiction comes depression, increased cancer risk, as Dr. Kern already alluded to, and many respiratory issues. So, in closing, we have an obligation to give our children and grandchildren, now I have grandchildren in the system, which I can't even believe, every advantage to support them in making healthy decisions that are going to impact the rest of their life. So let us do the right thing and ban the retail marijuana shops from opening in our community. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Fahey. Thank you for your efforts in the school system. Thank you very much. Dr. Kern?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council. Again, I thank you and applaud you for all your volunteer service to our community to make it the best community it can be. And I assure you tonight that I do have some new information, and I'm well under my three-minute limit in time. I do want to call your attention to a journal article that I was so compelled to share with you, that I printed an article for each of you. This is a lot of talk in our community about the relationship between cannabis use and our opioid epidemic. And in this study, researchers from the New York Psychiatric Institute and Columbia University in New York City studied thousands of cannabis users and followed them serially, and what they found was that the cannabis use appeared to increase rather than decrease the risk of developing non-medical prescription opioid use and opioid use disorder. It's a very compelling study, and that I will just present you with the summary finding. And if you'd like to read more about the article, I would recommend that to you. So, in essence, they're finding that people that are using cannabis on a regular basis do in fact have a higher incidence of subsequent opioid use disorder. And I just want to also share three little vignettes from you, with you, over the past week in my pediatric practice here in Bridgewater. The first one was last week, when I took a phone call from the parents of a 12-month-old child who had accidentally ingested some of their marijuana. The child was seen in the emergency room and fortunately was fine, but hopefully there'll not be another episode like that for that poor little child. The second vignette was of a 15-year-old teenager that I've known for many years, and during the course of his checkup with me, he was talking about his use of edible marijuana pills and candy for several years, and was regretting and lamenting the fact that it did seem to have a negative impact on his health. And then this morning, my last vignette is that of a one-month-old baby who, whose mother admitted to using marijuana during her pregnancy. The urine tox screen for the infant was positive for marijuana, and I just was asking mom if she was returning to work, and she said yes, that she would soon be returning to work. And I asked her what she did, and she said, "I'm a school bus driver." So, those three vignettes concern me a lot, and I just feel that if we have increased availability of marijuana, we're going to have increased use of the substance, and if we have increased use of the substance, we're going to have more complications. And I would just ask you to please allow that to be the final thing that you consider, is you consider a potential ban on recreational marijuana facilities in our town. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Kern. And just for future reference, you hit three minutes right on the dot. Any other public comment? All right. One more, Ms. Neary. Yes?
Good evening. And, Mr. Dutton, I apologize. I neglected to thank you for your help and your support during our plastic bag ordinance, and for even supporting this proclamation. My name is Pat Neary. I'm, I live at 225 Lakeside Drive. And I have some good news. I'm going to go to our Bridgewater Rainham High School tomorrow, so that I can view the new hydration station that has been installed there. I understand that the staff and the students love it. We plan to take pictures, and the superintendent and the principal will be meeting me there, so we can take the pictures and then spread the news, and somehow obtain more funding to get more hydration stations. The most important benefits of these units are that the plastic bottle rubbish will be reduced. But even more important is the fact that these filters in the unit reduce chlorine and lead in the water. It's so important that we do whatever it takes to have a healthy child. I know you'll all agree with that. So to even consider making another contaminant, marijuana, readily available in our town, conflict with the idea of trying to have a healthy child. One more thing, and these are my very personal opinions. I'm on a couple of committees in town. This isn't the Green Committee, and it's not the Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee that I'm on. Just my personal opinions. The fact that the committee recommended a moratorium on deciding marijuana ordinance, this recommendation was not made after much deliberation, as you may think. We volunteered for this committee during the summer, and met a few times while the compromise legislation was being worked on. To tell you the truth, we didn't know much about it for at least a couple of weeks. So then, since Bridgewater had not done anything regarding retail marijuana stores, we thought we should do something. So we said, "We'll do a moratorium, so that we can study the facts and gain knowledge." And that was two months ago. And the recommendation is dragging through the process. During that time, I've learned many facts that reinforce that I do not want marijuana stores in our community. A moratorium serves no purpose, and what will we learn during a moratorium that we don't already know? The solution for our town that voted no, that's our town, is a ban or an opt-out vote by our Town Council. Senator Will Brownsberger, a member of the Marijuana Conference Committee, which developed the compromise legislation cast in July, provides this information.
Okay, Ms. Neary, I'd like you to wrap up. We understand you're against marijuana.
This is all I have. Just this little paragraph.
Okay, keep going.
Senator Brownsberger said, "As to local voter approval, the compromise does provide that if a community voted against the ballot question last November, and local officials want to implement the expressed will of their community by imposing a ban on marijuana establishments, they can do so without going to the voters a second time." So, no to a second town vote, no to a moratorium. Our council can just vote for a ban. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other public comment? Mr. Ivaldi?
Good evening. Ed Ivaldi, 10 Boxwood Lane. Again, I'd like to thank you all for your service and personal sacrifice to the town. Your time and efforts are greatly appreciated. Over the past several months, there have been numerous citizens, business owners, medical professionals, clergy, and public safety experts who have voiced their concerns at these and other meetings about retail marijuana shops in Bridgewater. A significant amount of information has also been shared with you all, in the hopes of increasing your awareness of the associated risks and negative aspects to our community. To my knowledge, and I could be wrong, there's only been one proponent that has spoken at any of these meetings, and that was a non-resident attorney for the medical marijuana industry. Based on the information and the testimonies that have been presented to date, some of you have already made it clear that you support an opt-out strategy for Bridgewater. Others of you have been silent or simply reluctant to commit publicly, saying that you need more time and more information. My question to you is, how will you know when you've had enough info to make a decision? What will be different two weeks or two months from now that would change your mind? The data coming from the early adopter states continues to be very concerning, with many of the people in those states already calling their decision a huge mistake. I ask you to please consider that your vote to whether opt-out or not may actually be one of the most important decisions you will ever make as a counselor, since it will have a dramatic impact on future generations of our youth and on the face of Bridgewater as a town on the south shore of Massachusetts. Although Bridgewater voted against recreational marijuana last November, several of you have pointed out that your precinct constituents voted in favor, and that you need to abide by their votes. I suggest, excuse me, although I suggest that your decision should not be one based solely on your constituents and how they voted, which by the way, would be your easy choice, but it should also be made using your conscience and your courage. I hope that you will continue to listen to the people that speak at these meetings, and I hope that you will also take the time to ask yourselves each and every day, how will having retail pot shops in Bridgewater make life better for our citizens? The simple answer is, it won't, and the odds are that it will actually make things worse. I remind you that sometimes certain revenues, especially those from questionable or risky resources, are simply not worth taking. Numerous towns in our state are already figuring this out, and as a result, many have already opted out and more continue on a regular basis. I truly hope that all of you grasp the weight of the decision you face for our town, for your families, and for yourselves. It only takes five of you to have a majority vote to opt-out, to protect your fellow citizens, both young and old, from being harmed by this dark cloud hanging over our town. I leave you with this one question. Which of you has the courage to make the right choice over the easy choice? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ivaldi. Further public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Smith, Boxwood Lane, 225. I'm here for the marijuana thing, so I'm sorry. I promise I'll be quick. I just would like to please urge the Town Council once again to respect Bridgewater's vote against the sale of recreational marijuana. Please respect the will of your people and ban the sale of recreational marijuana in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Brittany Morrissey, 150 Lakeside Drive, Bridgewater, Mass. And I have to be honest with you, I was kind of on the fence. You know, I'm a very liberal, open-minded person. But I happened to catch 60 Minutes the other night, and the focus was on marijuana as a gateway drug. Now, I never saw it that way, because I'm, from an adult point of view, looking, but from a young person's point of view, there was one person, one young adult after another young adult, talking about their opiate addiction problem, which is, we know is just enormous in the state. But it was one comment made that said, "Well, I was already smoking pot anyways." So there you have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrissey.
I oppose.
Other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the Citizens Open Forum part of this. Thank you all for your input, and thank you for respecting the time limits, and thank you for respecting bringing new and different thoughts to what we've already heard before. I appreciate that very much. We're moving on to license transactions. Petition P-2017-026, one-day entertainment license for the Drop Spot at 27 Perkins Street. We'll let those folks file their way out. So, a one-day entertainment license for the Drop Spot at 27 Perkins Street on Sunday, October 3rd, so I hope they haven't planned anything yet if we vote no. Although Sunday, October 3rd doesn't seem right, and I'd ask the Town Manager to check that, so we can amend it.
22nd.
Because today is Tuesday.
It says October 22nd on the application.
Okay. So we'll amend that as a Scribnews error. You have plenty of time. Don't worry, Drop Spot. There's going to be a live DJ and music radio remote from cat country. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood, any discussion?
Yeah, I happened upon the Drop Spot down at the Autumn Fest over the weekend, and got to talk to him. But first, I got to listen to the explanation of what their business is to a mother with a young child. It sounds like it's a great opportunity for parents with young kids to have a place to just basically drop off the kid for a little bit. So it works out really well. And then we talked about the fundraiser, and I fully encourage it.
Thank you. Mr. Haley?
I agree. Actually, a family member is using Drop Spot or has used Drop Spot, and I knew nothing of it until said family member found out about it and discussed it with me. And I will certainly, I'll actually be in attendance at this event.
Other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. There are no presentations, so we can move on to the Town Manager's report.
Thank you, guys. I'm one of the owners of the Drop Spot. Thank you.
Oh.
Good luck.
Good luck. Mr. Dutton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of items, a few items, this evening, and I do want to give the council a little bit of an update on the status, excuse me, status of our complete streets and pedestrian safety prioritization plan. safety prioritization plan. We've filed all the necessary documents with the state to complete our Phase Two, and we've now begun our Phase Three. We are looking at trying to move as quickly as possible to secure the $400,000 in funding that this cycle could give us. The most critical piece of the Complete Streets program, the Complete Streets study, the most critical piece that they identified was the Central Square improvements, which they estimated to be, come in at a cost of over a million dollars. Obviously, $400,000 doesn't cover the million, so I've asked our finance director to begin to search and figure out how we could actually do a million-dollar project for $400,000 plus, however we can finance the remaining. So that, he is working on that. It is advisable, I believe, that we do this first. We are not confident that the same levels of funding will be retained in the Complete Streets program, and as an example of that, we were the last town to secure funding for the Phase One and Two portions of the Complete Streets program. They have now eliminated that funding moving forward. So, we are a little concerned about the continuing viability or the continuing funding of the state's Complete Streets program, so we are sort of anxious to do the biggest nut that we can as quickly as possible to make sure that we can actually get as much funding as possible. So, I'll keep you updated on that as we move along, because obviously, that's an important piece of improving the pedestrian safety and bike safety and slowing down the automobile traffic in Central Square. So I will obviously keep you updated on that. A piece of good information for the general public, as real estate taxes become due November 1st, we do have a new online payment mechanism, payment method. We've adopted Invoice Cloud, which allows people to pay their taxes online through many different methods, your smartphone, you know, your computer, your whatever. And this is largely in response to a lot of the reported issues with the old system, which had been around for a while, but that included an inability to pay past-due bills online. You can now pay a past-due bill, and the system will automatically calculate, you know, interest and so forth on a past-due bill. Before, you couldn't use your smartphone to pay. Prior to this new program, you needed a bill number to pay. That's gone. You can just plug your name in and select your bill. And the older system was also remarkably unreliable, so it was up and down. So this, I think we are moving well into the 21st century for folks that need to print a copy of their bill and come in and ask for a copy of their bill, which happens with great frequency. We now, those folks have the ability to look it up and print an actual copy of their bill right in their home or business. So that's, that is exciting for us. All the finance team has been trained on the new system, so if anybody doesn't, can't figure out how it works, they're welcome to come in and they'll get one of the folks downstairs to walk them through it and explain how it works. Just a brief update on the Mitchell School Building Committee. It has been meeting. It doesn't get as much publicity now as it did prior to the vote in June, but it has been meeting, and it's created its first subcommittee to select the owner's project manager, which is a required position under the school building authority guidelines and actually state law now. So, we do have a subcommittee that is specifically looking at the RFP for the hiring of the owner's project manager, and we anticipate that going out sometime the end of October after the MSBA formally invites us into the feasibility phase. So that is in the works. My office received one, unfortunately, just one proposal for the sale of the McElwain School. I won't comment on the contents of it just yet. We're still analyzing it for completeness, but I do expect to meet with the proponents to sort of flesh out their, the details of their proposal, and we'll see how that goes. Obviously, the council will be playing a role in that if we move forward. The building office, an update on Skip's. Building office has received and they've approved the revised plans for Skip's Liquors, the building, which does accommodate the change in grade, which was necessitated by the change in the elevation of the foundation footings. And however, due to the very long time that that establishment has not used its package store license, which we don't have any of, I will be issuing another notice of license revocation hearing to the owner later this week, and then that will, again, trigger a hearing process in front of the council. So that is in the works. Despite what I wrote, or what was written in my operational report, just to mind, if anybody noticed.
Passive voice is awesome.
I love it, because then I pass the buck. No, it was my fault. I wrote that the town clerk's office had not yet, well, I wrote that the town clerk's office had begun to tackle the town report compendium for the years the town report wasn't filed, and actually, they are working on, beginning to work on 2015 and 2017, but they won't do the compendium, which I think includes 2008 to, I can't remember, 2010 to whatever. It's about a five-year period until after they finish those two reports. So, my error, and I apologize for that. And I would only add two more things. Just a reminder that the Senior Center 2017 Health and Public Safety Expo, as the president mentioned, but I'll remind everybody again, is happening on Tuesday, October 17th, from 11 to 2. So folks should feel free to go down and visit with the local businesses and the sheriff's department and the DA's office and our own police and fire departments. So, the last thing I would add is that ever since I started in Bridgewater, I've had the very good luck to work with John Luck, and he likely is departing to move on to a brighter future at BTV. So I just want to let him know how much I appreciate what he does. He's made my job infinitely easier, so I appreciate that. That's what I have.
Questions for the town manager? George?
Through you to the town manager. So, in the update, I had noticed that our community economic developer coordinator is moving on to the Rockies?
Where?
Where's he going to?
North Carolina.
North Carolina, excuse me. All right, the mountains.
Oh, I thought you said Iraq.
No, the Rockies. I thought it was Colorado. My apologies. I did get correspondence from a constituent in regards to that opening with concern about any ongoing plan changes in the planning board, considering that we don't have one in that position. Their request was, if there are any changes to planning board rules or regulations, that it's put on hold until we get a new economic development. So I'm assuming that's okay with you?
I believe the planning board has been working on changes to their rules and regs for a while, and I don't, I haven't gotten a report of the meeting that happened the very last, oh, no, I'm sorry, I take it back. I think their plan was tomorrow night's meeting, they were going to look at, the planning board was going to look at actually voting their new rules and procedures.
I would probably personally highly recommend against doing that until we get a new economic development coordinator in here. I think it's going to be very important for the new person coming in to have a good overall understanding and, I'd say, influence on that process. That would be my personal recommendation. I don't know how much sway we have on that, but I'd like to put that out there. So, that's about it for me.
I will pass that along. I don't believe there's any restriction on opening up the rules and procedures, you know, if it turns out that, you know, something needs to be changed after a new person comes on. I think that's relatively easy, but I'll pass along the concern.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you. I do know the deadline for the McElwain RFP submittals came at the end of September. Could you give us an update of where that is at?
We received, excuse me, received one proposal, which I haven't read the whole thing thoroughly yet. It's quite lengthy, but the proposal looks to renovate the McElwain and also build something of comparable size in back of it. Obviously, they comply with all the parking and requirements, but it would be used for housing. I don't recall the number of units off the top of my head, but it's all, it's all straight housing, rental housing.
And we only got one, you said?
We only got one, which is a little disappointing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the town manager? Colm Bodas, you're going to raise your hand when I first look at you. I try to go left and right, left and right, so.
Thanks. Mr. Dutton, you've mentioned in the Historic District Commission that two new members have been appointed, but there are also a bunch of holdovers, and that made me wonder where we're at with kind of inventory of holdovers. I know we had a long, long list of holdovers for quite a while, and I don't know if we have any, if that, all that information is gathered in one spot where we can look at it. So I guess I'd like to urge you to take a good look at that and share that with the council. I just think it's important to have, not let holdovers last too long and to kind of work them through the approval process of going through the.
No, that's a, that's a great point. I want to say that there, we have very few holdovers, with the exception of the HDC and possibly the Historic Commission. I think most of the, all of the major boards now have, are either appointed, reappointed, but I don't believe we have any holdovers.
If you could get.
But I'll get that.
Yeah, something. Also, I was thinking about the, our discussion last, a couple of weeks ago, about Chapter 90 funds, and you would point it out that our Chapter 90 funds from the state meet only about half of the need to just maintain the roadway system as it is.
That's close to that, anyway. It's sort of in orders of magnitude, correct?
So I would just remind the council, and perhaps this is an item for a discussion, I hope it's something you're thinking about, how to address it. If you've got, if you're not keeping up with maintenance, stuff is going to continue to degrade, and that's not even talking about sidewalks. And what prompted all this, kind of refreshed my memory on all this, was a constituent was very concerned about the condition of sidewalks and curbs. So I think it's something we need to look at. It's not, not pretty, I guess, but something we got to do. Then I had one other question about the striping for the parking on Park Ave. I was just wondering if there was any consideration of bicycle traffic down School Street, because it would seem that School Street is a major connector between the campus and the common, and to maintain that as an easy thoroughfare for bikes makes sense. So, I was wondering, looking at the striping, I walked up to the meeting from my house, and I wonder if a bike lane kind of between the curb and the parking wouldn't have been the best place, and I don't know if we can do that in the future, perhaps, and extend the lines or something. So I think it's just something, I guess it's too late right now, but if we could kind of take a look at that, I think that's worth doing.
We, I know we have looked at that, and I know that the striping that's there now is, is not permanent, it's not, you know, heat-sealed striping, and I know that V, it was either VHB or Howard Stein Hudson gave us a design that had a bike lane. I don't believe the bike lane was close to the sidewalk. I think it was on the other side, but we have that plan.
Accommodated, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's a key component of, I think, the overall Complete Streets program is to accommodate bike lanes where we can and avoid multi-use paths. So, that street is wide enough, so we've had lengthy discussions about that, and I'll find out where that stands.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions for the town manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussions, which there are none, committee reports. Are there any committee chairs who would like to make reports? Mr. Colm Bodas?
I guess I would, there are several measures in our committee. We made a referral on one of them, but there are two that are standing. The one which talks about nuisance property and littering, and so those are two pretty big ordinances that we met with the outgoing Community Economic Development Director, and he suggested we meet with town council to kind of tweak some of these ordinances and make them a little tighter and make them more workable. So we're still working on that. That's where that stands. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other committees?
May I?
Mr. Sussa?
Yes. Back in July, there was a motion made to send to the Strategic Planning Committee to look into the zoning in town and recommendation as to whether we should spend up to $150,000. I believe it went to the Strategic Planning Committee. I haven't seen any meetings on that issue. Can anyone inform us what's going on?
I don't believe it went to the Strategic Planning Committee, but I know it was brought up. Maybe the town manager can help out with that one? When it comes to rezoning, zoning plan, and I don't believe that was forwarded to the Strategic Planning Committee, but I know we talked about it here at council.
I wonder if the council clerk has any?
Yeah, I think, what I'd say, Mr. Sussa, is we're not going to do all the research right here, right now. Thank you for bringing it up. Do you have, do you have the referral right now?
It was put to our, thank you. So there you have it.
So, you're going to meet on it?
We will.
All right. There you go, Mr. Sussa.
Perhaps we should refresh ourselves of, at any time, the full council can yank something from a committee if they're not, if they're sitting on it. Not to suggest that's what's happening, but just, that's the process. We do.
Well, that's kind of like what I was driving at.
Let's not go there yet.
So that we don't.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to get some action moving forward, is what I hear from the committee chair.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Wood?
Time is really, I know many of the speakers spoke about the ban, but time is of the essence for a moratorium. I'm just wondering where that stands within the committees.
You referred to the Community Economic Development Committee, was it not?
With a joint meeting with the planning board.
Yes.
Joint meeting is scheduled for?
November 1st.
November 1st, or 7 o'clock here? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Been posted?
Yep.
Be all about it online.
Thank you. If I can find the agenda on the webpage, that's another thing. Thank you.
All right. Anything else under committee report? Seeing none, we'll move on to legislation for action, which is ordinance FY 18004, Senior Associates Volunteer Program, essentially an ability for seniors to volunteer for the town to be able to lower their property tax bill. At their meeting held on September 19th, the Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend, the Finance Committee also voted unanimously to recommend at their meeting held on September 11th, 2017. This has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website and may be finally considered this evening as there are motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. George. Mr. Wood, discussion?
Oh, this is, this is a great way to slightly increase the amount of money that a participant in the save can, can get from the program because of the change in, in the law. It ties it more closely to the law.
Mr. George?
No, I'm very much in support of this. Anything we can do to help out our seniors and also help out our community at the same time, I'm a big advocate of.
Other discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Holberg?
Yes.
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 Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch, yes, nine in favor, nine against.
Thank you. Moving on to Order 2017037, Town Council Acceptance of Open Spaces and Recreational Plan Update. At their meeting held on September 28th, the Community and Economic Development Committee voted three to zero to recommend this measure. This measure may finally be voted on this evening as there are motion. Said by Ms. Loesch, seconded by Mr. Haley. seconded by Mr. Haley. Ms. Loesch, discussion?
When we met, we went through the document and a lot of the goals and objectives of the document, and it also made quite clear that it's an open space and recreation plan for the town. So we're really looking forward to getting this underway and hopefully starting to implement as soon as we can.
Mr. Haley.
I am looking forward to that. That's all I have to say about it.
Further discussion from the council? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Holmberg.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on, we have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. Ordinance DFY 18007, Parking Ordinance, which is Counselor Perry's. So I'll turn it over to him for a general overview.
Certainly. This ordinance definitely spearheaded by the Community Economic Development Department as well as the town manager, seeks to set up some paid parking areas within the center of the town, on-street as well as off-street parking, namely in areas around School Street and Spring Street, the Spring Street parking lot, town parking lot, Broad Street parking lot, in efforts to certainly raise some funds to help improve downtown business district. And as mentioned earlier, roadways and sidewalks and things of that nature. I think it's something that could benefit the town greatly as well, you know, definitely in generating revenue for these repairs and these improvements that our regular town budget probably cannot afford us to do.
Is there a motion to refer to the Community and Economic Development Committee?
I'd like to make a motion to amend before we send it, if please.
Okay, there's a motion to amend. Mr. Wood?
Within Section 2, Item Number 2, Spring Street, I'd like to make a motion to strike that from the, from the measure.
I'll second that for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Wood, Mr. Wood, discussion on Spring Street?
Thank you. There are a number of viable businesses down there that, that need parking, quick parking in the case of Bridgewater Bagel. There's a, you know, the restaurant down there, Brianna's, that needs parking. There is, there is parking around that, but I've actually talked to several of the business owners about enhancing the parking times down there to allow someone to park for an hour as opposed to 45 minutes, which is the current, current time now. So I feel that by having Spring Street included in this measure, that we will actually harm the businesses instead of enhancing Bridgewater. It's, it's uncertain to me how many college kids park on that road, but I do know that a lot of people visit the bagel shop, and they're there for a few minutes, and it would be really inconvenient and to have to pay whatever the value is to run in and get a coffee and a bagel, and I think it may deter people from doing that. So I think we should remove it now. Maybe in discussion, there could be viable argument for bringing it back, but I think for now, I'd like to see this stricken from the measure.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, reading through this, I know it's going to be referred to a committee tonight, but I don't know where this will go or what conversations have been had with the business owners, but I know the ones that Mr. Wood just referenced have no idea that this is even being worked on by the town, particularly by Counselor Perry. I think this is probably one of the worst public policies we could put forth in this town at this time, notwithstanding what's going to happen with the marijuana issue down the road. I don't think there's a need for this, in my opinion. I don't have a problem sending it with committee, but I do have a problem with, with making amendments now. I don't know if that's the proper way to do it. I think you send it to committee as is and then come back and have these discussions or have these discussions in the committee. Because, you know, I mean, I'd like to see this not even go to a committee, but I guess that's the process. But I think we are opening a can of worms, but we'll see.
Mr. Colin Bodas.
First, I guess I'd, through you, Mr. President. What was my thought?
We're on the amendment, so if you could just.
Well, yeah, to that point, to that point, exactly. I, I think there are points, there are situations in which it would make sense to make an amendment here. If there's one element in the, in a measure that's loathsome or somehow makes no sense to any of the council members, why not strike it right then and there and get a more refined version before you send it on, you know, why put? So I think there are places, I'm not sure this is the place to do that, but I think there are cases in which that's useful. Secondly, I didn't quite understand Mr. Wood's logic about, bagel shop needs quick turnover, needs spots to be available quickly, and it would seem like imposing a time limit with meters would ensure more rapid turnover, which would benefit that sort of use. So I'm trying to get my head around that, so perhaps.
Mr. Wood, would you like to respond since you referenced?
Sure. So since, since the ordinance has no measure of what the value would be for those parking spaces in terms of usability, daily revenue, any sort of that, I see it as an inconvenience. So maybe, so let's, let's look at School Street for a second, if I can have a little latitude. So School Street is certainly adjacent to the college, and the first night that I went down to School Street, which was about 12:35 a.m., every single spot on School Street was filled. Were they filled with people going to church? No. Were they filled with people visiting Town Hall or the center of town? No. They were filled with college students who were probably visiting one of the dorms or something like that. Or maybe they were filled with folks going to other locations, but, but during the day, it is guaranteed that those spots unmetered on School Street will be filled by, most likely, college students. And if you, if you drive down today in the middle of the day, you'll see stickers where they would normally park in the garage, park down School Street. It's unmetered, there's no, there's no enforcement right now, there are no, there's no signage. And it makes sense to me to put meters there. Kids have to.
We're kind of putting the cart before, for the horse at this point, so.
Yeah. So, so let me reverse that. So down on, on Spring Street, where we have a number of businesses, and it's a little bit further away from the college, you don't often see this type of parking on Spring Street for a long time. And we do have enforcement available today, right? You stay more than 45 minutes, and you can walk into any shop on that street and ask the owners, have you gotten a ticket while parked on the street? And they will say yes, right? So there is enforcement today. It's a ticket, $25 ticket. Having, putting a meter there and having enforcement there for something like the bagel shop, I think injures the shop and injures the town's ability to be friendly. And we've all gone to BTV as part of this, this group to meet down there. There is quite a bit of off-street parking there, and, and there's some residents in there and that sort of thing. I, I think it's just going to injure the area rather than help the town overall. That's, that's my feeling, anyway.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Colin Bodas.
I'll be quick. I'm not sure that it will injure businesses. I think it might benefit businesses to have a faster turnover, so I think that's something committees should look at. So I will not be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Perry?
Yes. In that vein, I mean, I understand Mr. Wood's comments, and I think it's definitely something that, as it goes to the subcommittee, it should be discussed and looked into. So at least if it is listed as part of this ordinance, I think at least we'd be able to discuss it to determine whether it should stay or it should go. So in that vein, I think I would agree with declining the approval of the amendment at this time, just so we can vet it out in the subcommittee at this stage.
Further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Gallagher?
And I understand where Bill Wood's coming from, Counselor Wood. I, I'd like to strike all three of them, but I'm not going to do that now because I think it should go to committee. But I think that when it comes back, you know, whatever it looks like when it comes back, we, I think we can take up these amendments now and hopefully get some business owners involved here, because this is, it's not just about the student, it's about the residents and the taxpayers of this town as well, who do go downtown and would like to go downtown. But I'm not going to go on, I'm not going to go on tonight. That's, so I will not support this bill, Counselor Wood, at this time.
So one last comment for me?
Mr. Wood?
So I'm in Quincy almost every day, and if you go into downtown Quincy, downtown Quincy, Quincy Center has paid parking. If you're on Hancock Street or some of the other side streets, parking spaces, no meters. I, I think we're going a little bit too far here. What I'm willing to do now is, now that we've had this discussion, is, is withdraw the amendment, let it go to committee if that's the will of the council, and then we can discuss it later.
So you're going to withdraw your motion to amend?
I'll second.
Withdraw your second? All right. I'd just like to say before we move on that, you know, I think it is important to have discussions about the issues that we see in front of us at this first reading, so that the chair of the committee and the members of the committee hear the issues that are coming up and that, that people may have sticking points on. We can't all make it to every committee meeting. I'll probably be divorced or something at that point in time, but that's fine. So they, they hear, they hear the, they hear the information and can go back and, and look at it in that light. So I appreciate the offer of the amendment, Mr. Wood, for that reason, so that we're able to do that. So I'll entertain a motion to refer to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Some of, made by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Loesch. Mr. Perry, further discussion?
No, thank you.
Ms. Loesch, any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
In reference to the three spots, so I don't know how effective, and maybe this will carry into the committee, I don't know how effective Section 3 will be, which is where the meters, off-street parking would be. That Spring Street lot, it never has a car in it. Sometimes it has a MBTA truck in it, but it never has a car. You know, Broad Street lot, which is adjacent to the old rail station, maybe so. But here's, here's the kicker that most people don't know about unless they actually read this, and hopefully people will. So now we're considering metering the town lot behind my sister-in-law. And, and, you know, so go to, I suppose it could end before Music Alley starts, but if Music Alley starts at 5:00, you're going to put a quarter in the meter to go visit Music Alley. That's all, that's all my comment. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to refer to the committee? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, it's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to Order OFY 18007, Creation of the Town Hall Arts and Commerce Center. Mr. Colin Bodas?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could, I'd like to read through all the whereases.
Go for it, it's yours.
Whereas Bridgewater Center suffers from disinvestment and a lack of overall economic vibrancy, and whereas performing arts, artist studios and art galleries and other public and community events stimulate positive community and economic development, and whereas shared workspaces, business incubators, and small-scale retail generate positive economic development, and whereas the town hall's proximity to Bridgewater State University and residential neighborhood make it accessible to a large market accessible by foot, and whereas Music Alley series has been extremely successful in its first two seasons, thus demonstrating significant public enthusiasm for community-oriented performing arts, and whereas the town hall building has traditionally served as the center of community life in Bridgewater. And ordered that the town manager shall develop a requisition for proposals for the reuse of the town hall that strongly encourages uses that will draw people to the center of town, namely the arts, community functions, and small business development. I know that this council has already voted on a, a measure that speaks to the dispensation of the town hall, and that, that measure called for a very open-ended, sort of let the market decide approach to reuse of the town hall. And I thought, first of all, we've got time to do this, that an important part of redevelopment of the town hall is relocation of the fire station, Fire Station 1, which is a long way off. So I think we've got time to take a look at what would work for the town and target it to exactly these sorts of uses, a dual use, multi-use, and, and this is really reminiscent of, of the use, traditional uses of the town hall. The upstairs was a meeting room, and there were dances and all sorts of public events. The downstairs had a lot of foot traffic, and, and given its proximity to the Music Alley, I think it could work as a, you know, combination, combination of all these different uses. So I'd like the town council to reconsider the direction it gives the town manager for reuse of the town hall.
Is there a motion to refer to the Community Economic Development Committee?
I'll make a motion.
Made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. George. Mr. Gallagher, discussion?
Mr. President, my understanding is that this council, and correct me if I'm wrong, already voted to put an RFP out for lease of that space. Did that RFP go out with the McElwain RFP? Or has that not been sent out yet?
No, it hasn't been sent out yet.
We, that's what we voted on, though, right?
For, just for the lease, correct.
To put an RFP out for a lease? And when, we expected that to get done? We're not going to do that?
Barring any action, you know, in the near future on Counselor Colin Bodas's proposal, we would.
Right, but this is new, this is new. We voted on that months ago, so we haven't sent out an RFP for that yet.
No.
I have no problem with this, but I don't know if the board, the council wants to change the direction that we gave the town manager a few months ago, so.
I think that's what we have to work through the process on, in my opinion.
And, and referring it to the, referring it to the Economic Development Committee is fine. I know we just referred something else, and they have a big meeting on November 1st. You've got a lot to do, and I, you know, I, I hope that what's before you now gets, gets attention first.
Mr. George?
No, I think, I echo what Mr. Gallagher said, so.
Souza, then Mr. Colin Bodas.
Thank you. Councilman Colin Bodas, what research have you done with other locations that have turned a town-owned business into that type of facility?
Good question. I've done actually a lot of research. I was in downtown Plymouth a few weeks ago and saw that, I guess the town had bought an old church, and it's a music venue, yeah, right downtown with an extensive concert series. It, it's all over the place. I mean, I think there's evidence from a lot of smaller towns and cities that the arts can be just a really positive, they draw people downtown. We talk about downtown as being not a very vital place, not a place you want to hang out, and you see with the Music Alley that there's, people appreciate that. And I think this sort of, these sorts of uses dovetail well with our overall strategy to bring foot traffic and make it easier for, so it's consistent with all sorts of plans that the town has, has looked at. There's a lot of evidence. I mean, I guess if this comes to committee, I'll, I'll share, you know, several examples of those sorts of uses.
I'll be there to hear it.
Okay, Ms. Loesch.
Mr. Colin Bodas, just looking at your order, there seems to be a number of examples. Maybe you might want to share those with Mr. Souza?
I don't have them, I don't know that we want to take the time now, Mr. President.
Not today, not now, in the future.
Well, they're in the packet.
That's, yeah, that's a point of, thank you. Point of clarification, there are examples in the order, so please feel free to share those.
Right, the hyperlinks don't come across, across the.
Not well on paper now.
Right.
Right.
Further discussion on sending it to the committee? Did you have something else, Mr. Colin Bodas?
No, it'll be a separate point.
Okay. I'm not going to like make you explode if you don't say it.
I can bring it up now. I mean, it seems like we first, if, I think it's important to look at the notion of time, how much time do we have? Would it, you know, first we need to decide, you know, learn from the town manager whether it does in fact make sense to mothball the town hall for two years. We haven't really, you know, if that's the case, that affects how we consider this. If he wants to put an RFP out next week, then this doesn't make sense, so.
Yeah, and, and I'd just say that dovetails into the whole capital plan that we have to have to figure out, what are we going to do with Station 1, and how are we going to use our whole footprint down there, and so on and so forth.
Right. It's really critical for the, let me just point out the, how critical that use of that adjoining land where the fire station is now. The town hall doesn't have a, an elevator and doesn't have a whole lot of parking. So to free up that space to do a joint building with a building on the footprint of the fire station, that was, this is all in the feasibility plan.
Correct.
So it's really hard to redevelop town hall without an elevator and more space to do it. So that's kind of what justifies waiting and taking a closer look at this. So we should confirm that with the town manager.[1797.51] I'll do that offline.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of referring to the Community Economic Development Committee, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to Sewer Enterprise Transfer Emergency Repair, Order FY 18008. Mr. Dutton?
Mr. President, this is requested by the Sewer Department. There is a line, the original raw sludge line that comes into the plant was installed in 1988. It's made of ductile iron, and that is, had to be repaired once at least. And during that repair, they identified blockages and pieces of iron within the pipe, which indicates that it's deteriorated beyond its useful lifespan. So this, this is money that actually, the first test of our special purpose reserve within the sewer fund. And this money, $150,000, would be used to replace the pipe, and it would be a permanent replacement, not requiring any additional work when the plant is upgraded.
Is there a motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Sure.
Made by Mr. Wood?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood, discussion?
I'm, I'm just wondering on this if, if there's any mandatory reason to go to Finance Committee? Because, I, I say that because maybe since it seems like it's urgent, if we keep it at the council level, we can just act on it at next meeting. But maybe, maybe the Finance Committee does need to hear it.
Are you suggesting an emergency preamble and using that provision of the charter?
Well, we wouldn't need that if we just kept it over to the next meeting.
I'd ask the town attorney to look at the charter and make sure that we're not treading on the Finance Committee's role to weigh in on all financial matters, so.
That, that's, that's actually what I'm asking.
Okay.
We need Finance Committee to, why don't, why don't we just, yes, continue with the vote, we can always backtrack later.
Mr. Haley? Nothing on referring. Any other discussion on referring to those committees pending the town attorney's review and pending perhaps an emergency preamble and, and that having to be done? All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to Town Council Meeting Dates, Resolution RFY 18002. Mr. Wood, 2018 meeting dates.
I want to thank our council clerk, Ann Holmberg, for putting this together. This is the third, fourth, seventh year that she's done that. Going through the counter and finding the appropriate dates that match the, both the charter as well as the school, the school vacations and other vacations where it needs to make adjustments. And so, I'm not sure we need to send this to any committee, but we can if people want to.
I think we just leave it first reading tonight and bring it back next week.
Sounds good.
Unless folks have any other preference. Ms. Loesch?
I just have one point, is that 16 out of the 22 meetings are exceptions to our rules. Maybe we should review our rules.
As the chairman of the Rules and Procedures Committee, you are welcome to bring that up at any point in time, Miss.
Can we cover it for me?
Thank you. All right. So we'll just leave that here at the council and see what we do next time around. Moving on, citizens' comments. Mr. Ivaldi, thank you for waiting.
I wasn't planning to, at Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane, I wasn't planning to speak again until I stayed for the discussion that you all just had. And I have a question. I know you're not supposed to respond to questions, so maybe somebody can cover it during councilor comments, but when ordinances come before the council, like the one you just brought up about doing something with town hall or parking or anything that has to do with the downtown area, is there, is there some referral back to some master plan? I guess that's my question. Because if we're talking about rehabbing a building, how does that fit into the rest of the plan for the downtown area? So maybe you have an answer, maybe that's already been figured out, but that's just a question I have as a citizen. There's a lot of vacant buildings in the area, there's a lot of facades of buildings in the area. I don't know what the plans are for any of that, but it seems to me like there should be an overall master plan, be it a five-year, 10-year, whatever length of time it is that addresses all these things. I've gone to the Music Alley the last two years, and you're right, it's very successful, but it's almost like now it's outgrown its space. So the last couple of times I went, there were people out on the sidewalks that couldn't get in. So I'm thinking, why don't we move it to the common? The center of the town, the center. Is there, is that, maybe make it bigger? Then you run into traffic issues. But questions like that, it's something that's very successful, you don't want it to die where it is. You want it to grow, and you want it to be able to have other citizens come in and take advantage of it, so.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Ivaldi. And I'd ask Mr. Colum Botes if he feels compelled or interested to address it in his council comments. He may not, but eventually someone will get back to you. He, he seems compelled occasionally, though. All right. Moving on. Any further citizens' comments? Seeing none. Ms. Loesch, council comments?
I want to thank all that were involved in Autumn Fest. I heard great reviews from all those that attended. I also wanted to express my excitement for the South Shore Brew Fest that's happening this weekend. And I also wanted to call out the WELL, I'm sure as you will, as well, Mr. Fitzgibbons, about the gala that they're having in a few weeks over at Indian Pond. They provide great services and opportunities to the community, so I want to thank them for what they're doing and continue to do for us. And the marijuana hearing, which we did talk about, will be a joint meeting with the Planning Committee on November 1st. It will be held here. We're looking to get extra chairs, because we're looking to have a big group. But we're having it here due to the facilities of having best, the microphones and the lighting and being able to record it. So looking forward to seeing all of those at that meeting.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Autumn Fest was a challenge this year. When they say rain or shine, they really mean rain or shine. We had a little bit of both. I did manage to visit, I think, all the tents. It was a good showing by the vendors. Hopefully that didn't deter anyone from participating next year. And I really appreciate the Business Association collaborating with the college for the space and the venue and everything that goes on down there. So that's good. I, I'll just make one brief comment about the, the moratorium. And I know a, a bunch of people are looking for a ban, but the moratorium, I think, is, is critical at this juncture because there's a lot of new information that continues to come up. There was an article in the Boston Globe this week that talked about a new measure that will be introduced shortly at the state level that would restrict taxes to communities that voted against, against the ban, against, against retail shops. So, and, so they wouldn't share in the 17% taxes. And it's a very complicated discussion, it was, it was a good article. But I, I believe that the moratorium is an important hold on the process so that we can, and, and there was comments about, have we made up our mind? Haven't we made up our mind? I think there's a lot of information from our neighbors, from what's happening at the state and other things that are, that's really critical to take a look at in the next, next future. And finally, you know, when it comes to being a district representative, which I am and seven, you know, six of my colleagues here are, I think districts matter. We're not selectmen. We're not town-wide. There are two town-wide representatives here. But that's why I spoke up about Spring Street. Spring Street is in my district. And that's why, when looking at the marijuana proposals, my district voted heavily in favor of question four. Now, there wasn't a separation in the question that said, are you okay with adults partaking in recreational marijuana but not having shops? There wasn't that separation. All I can tell from, from those numbers are that my district, just like three other districts in town, supported question four. So I think that the moratorium's important so that we can evaluate where things are, what the next steps are, what's happening at the state level, what's happening with our neighbors. And hopefully we have, we'll see that sometime soon. Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you. Again, you know, thanking the BBA, the Bridgewater Business Association for putting on as best they could Autumn Fest this year. We did get some downpours midday and having a tent there for my businesses while we ended up packing up a little bit early. But, but as always, they've put together a great program and look forward to hopefully next year's weather being a little bit better. I also want to congratulate the organizers of the 5K race, the Bridgewater Police 5K. They had another successful race again this year, and I do believe the weather held off for them, so kudos to them. And then, what else do I want? I just want to also just thank those that helped bring those proclamations before us tonight, for Bring Your Own Bag Month, and as well as the WELL for the good work that they do. And that's about it that I have for time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Haley?
I, I wasn't going to say anything, but I will say this. Early when I took the seat, we didn't have much participation from our townspeople. You know, it's unfortunate that it takes a hot-button issue or several hot-button issues to get people involved. But that being said, people are involved. You know, we are, with talks about the, the ban and what have you with marijuana, if that's the only hot-button issue that gets people here, at least they're here. And I'm excited about that. I grew up here. I spent many, many hours, probably way past my bedtime with my parents, with the old, the old meetings and standing up and watching my parents raise their hand and get upset for reasons I never knew. And that was when Bridgewater was a really great farm league for politics. And a lot of great people went on to state politics in this, from this town. And if this is a hot-button issue that can create great people doing great things, I think it's wonderful. Unfortunately, we have to go back and forth a lot, but let's see what the future brings.
Thank you. Mr. Susa?
I think they've all said what I was going to say, so.
Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Gallagher's never heard a last word.
I got a couple of things tonight, but I'll just talk about it. I'll, I'll tell you, I'll cross one of these off, okay, Tim? All right. Now, I just want to, again, echo that the Bridgewater Business Association did a great job this year establishing another great Autumn Fest despite the weather. But I, even though that I am a councillor at large, and some, and six of you, seven of you are district councillors, I feel as though that you represent the whole town as well. Even though you're elected within your district, I think as a councillor at large, that everybody in here represents the entire town. And, and should not specifically legislate based on your own district. If it's good for District 6, you should say to yourself, is this good for District 1, 2, 3, 4, all the, all the way through? That's just my view on this. It should give you representation to those districts, specific representation on certain things, but I look at it as we're, we're all councillors, period. And on the issue of recreational marijuana, I do hope that on November 1st, the joint meeting between the Community and Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board, that a spirited discussion takes place and the public has an opportunity to speak and that a recommendation is made that night or shortly thereafter to us. My opinion is, there is nothing good that will come to this community by issuing licenses for recreational marijuana. Nothing good will come of that. I don't need to read more reports. I don't need to see what the legislature does with the 17% tax revenue on towns that didn't do it. And that legislation, by the way, will go nowhere. So I continue to ask all of you to just continue, if you haven't made up your mind and you're still on the fence, then look at the reports. Go to the meeting on the 1st and continue to educate yourself on what kind of community we want and the effects that it could have in our community, on our young people, on our, on our senior population, and the effect it could have on businesses that may or may not come to our town. And we'll talk about aid parking later on. Thank you, Mr. Susa.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Colum Botes?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I wanted to thank Pat Neary and all the other members of the Green Committee for taking the effort to put forward a plastic, a plastic ban ordinance. I think it's worked out okay. We've survived it, and I think it's been a benefit, so I applaud that effort. And then I want to respond to Mr. Ivaldi. I like to think that most committees in town, when, when looking at development issues and, you know, jiggering things around, would look at what we've got on the books. And I know the Planning Board and, and, you know, our committee, we make every effort to look at consistency with both the master plan, and when something's downtown-specific, we'd look at the downtown revitalization plan, which, if you go to the town website and enter downtown in the search bar, that's, you'll find it right there. So that's, that's a good place to start, with to look at where this council, where the town is, is focused as a, as a path forward. So it's incumbent on all of us to look, to refer to what we've got on the books and, you know, work from there. And in terms of Music Alley and location, there's a, a board that controls Music Alley, and so you can talk to them about relocating and logistics. I'm sure they'd love to hear your input. And then on the marijuana thing, there are two citizens who spoke on, asked the question, what will we learn that we don't already know? And two people asked that question, and Mr. Gallagher kind of echoed that sentiment. And I think I can fairly confidently say that not every member of this committee has looked at all the evidence and put in the, the hours it will take to really look at all of it. I don't think there's one, there's nothing fatal enough about, I don't know. I think it's worthy of debate. I think it's worthy of looking at the evidence. And moratorium gives us that time to, to do it and do it right. So I support that.
Thank you, Mr. Colum Botes. Mr. George?
Thank you. A couple of things. First, I want to say thank you to councillor Ha, excuse me, Haley Gallagher, town manager, Mr. Dutton. I've got a situation in, in my precinct that we're trying to work through to the benefit of two parties. I think the first meeting that we had with the residents went well. Looking forward to having the meeting with the other party and really try to come to some sort of consensus that we can get everybody kind of living and working and playing together from, from that perspective. Autumn, Autumn Fest was great. I was there for a while, and I just missed the rain. But I do give a lot of credit to the Bridgewater Business Association, all the vendors, the performers, that I don't think there was really too many people that didn't show, and they knew what was coming, and it came. So I thought that was great. In regards to the parking, real quick, you know, I've always said, looking at revenue sources for the town is, is always something that we have to take a hard look at. But I also have to be very, very mindful of the balancing act of how it could potentially negatively impact the businesses downtown. I'm even looking at School Street as potentially having that as a negative, even though it'll turn the parking spots, and I know that a lot of college kids are there. You know, I'd hate for that to, to become an issue where it makes it even more of a challenge. And also the municipal lot behind my sister and I, to be able to get people to find some easy parking, get in, you know, go to some of the businesses, be able to get out of there for, you know, what I saw for $275,000. I don't necessarily know if that's going to be a good, a good outcome for that. I don't know yet. It, it's great for the discussion as well, but, you know, hopefully we come up for that. I, I've said this before, and I, and I'll say it again, I've been very overt about this on the, on the medical, on the recreational marijuana. I have a much different approach to this, where I'm actually, I've, I've said that I still do not understand why the legislation did what they did on the local decision-making around either having it or not. It boggles my mind, and I've looked, and I can't find anything that set a precedent that determine, towns could take different paths to determine where they go. It makes no sense to me. I am a firm believer that if at any time we can put decisions, specific decisions in the hands of the voters, we do it. And that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. I'd just like to mention two things that came up tonight. One, that the town manager referenced in his report, the Mitchell School Building Committee. We're moving forward and expect to get formally invited into the feasibility study at the We're moving forward and expect to get formally invited into the feasibility study at the end of this month. Just checking off boxes for the state, and they've all been checked off at this point. So we've got an invite to the meeting, and they're going to be happy to welcome us. I'm also on the subcommittee that the town manager referenced around getting the owner's project manager in. And I can't emphasize enough how important an owner's project manager is to these projects. The OPM is what, what got us this building under the, under the strict leadership of Mr. John Garrish, who's actually the chairman of the, of the subcommittee that the town manager referenced. So we're moving forward, and we're taking all of that responsibility very, very seriously. And I see Mr. Dolan's in the audience, and he's the vice chair of the entire school building committee. So, you know, obviously, I thank him for his service, and, and he's, he's taking it very seriously. And I know the school committee is as well. So we're, we're moving forward with all due speed and trying to do the right thing for the town. And the last thing I want to close with is about the well and their event coming up. I've worked in health insurance for a number of years, and spent a number of years during that time working on financing of mental health for folks. And it's important that we all realize that having a brain disease, and that's what, that's what a mental health issue is, it's a brain disease. It's, it's just like having cancer or a broken leg. You know, trying to tell someone with depression to get over it is trying to tell someone who's deaf to listen harder. You can't do it. They have a disease that needs to be treated. And what they're doing is, is really great stuff, and I applaud them very much for it. So with that, we don't need an executive session. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Made by Ms. Loesch, seconded by Mr. Haley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.